Welcome everyone, I apologize for being a little late. I've been at school all week.
Did you learn something?
I learned a lot. I learned a lot. Let's see. Nancy?
I'm over here.
Hey Nancy. Would you do our prayer?
Our residents in Chaplaincy are studying leadership. And today, actually, someone presented on leadership and from this book, Boundary Leaders, and it happens to be a book that Kevin introduced me to when I first got here, coincidentally. And I want to read a quote from it, a very short quote, I promise, and then for us to pray.
I said I'd recognize that book.
Yes, you do. Usually when we think of boundaries, what do we think of?
Senseages.
Something that separates, that's limits. Yes, okay. This is what Gary Gunderson, who's now the Vice President of something at Baptist Hospital in Winston-Salem, I don't know his exact title, I'm going to read. It's a different way of thinking of boundaries. Boundaries are where things come together, where the fields of relationship engage. A boundary is exactly not where things separate, but the edge of where things join. Physically, as between nations. Legally, as between organizations. Emotionally, as between values. Mentally, as between ideas. It seemed like a perfect quote for us today. Will you pray with me? Bring us together, we pray, oh God. Bring us together. As individuals, in our families, as departments, on the Baroness campus, in Erlanger Health System, and well beyond us all. Bring us together, we pray, so that your love and grace may unfold in this present moment and as we respond to all that is before us now. Bring us together, we pray. Amen.
Okay. Do we have any special guests?
Hundreds.
Well, let's get started. I want to just make a comment before we get started, because I know it's kind of the elephant in the room. But, you know, I left Cleveland on Sunday, you know, with the headline in the newspaper. And, you know, again, I'm disappointed that the letter was, I guess, you know, if you want to say leaked or shared with the newspaper. I want to thank Elizabeth. Elizabeth's doing her job, and I think the article's very fair, and I appreciate that. And subsequent articles as well, so thank you for doing your job. And, you know, it didn't make anybody happy, I don't think, but thank you. You know, we're here to do what's right. We're here to do what's best for this hospital. And, you know, when we received that letter, and I think everybody on MedExec would agree that, let's go back. None of us guys, except for a couple of doctors sitting here, but most of us aren't here every day. You know, this isn't our profession. We're volunteers. Unfortunately, we own the hospital, right? So that's very unique. But, we're not here to micromanage. We're not here to, you know, tell a doctor how to do his job, or we're here to tell Kevin how to do his job, and I guess that's part of it. But, we welcome that information. We welcome that letter, and we acted on that letter. And I think everyone on MedExec would agree to that. And so, I might ask Will, because, you know, I think the ED is priority number one for this organization right now, and would you possibly update us on some steps that have been taken since May 20, or May, that letter, I think I received that letter on May the 9th, 8th or 9th or something?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, just a few brief things. First, I will say, again, I do appreciate the leadership of the MedExec Committee in terms of determining, these are issues that we want to have addressed from a quality and safety standpoint. I'll also say in short notice, with the blessing of the Board and with the blessing of the Ministry of Leadership, we came together and have developed a committee that involves six medical staff members and six members of administration, all of whom I think have been very engaged. We just had a meeting at four o'clock. We meet every Thursday at four o'clock, and rundown issues relative to how we can improve both, I mean, pretty much everything across the spectrum. How are we accepting patients? When are we accepting patients? How are we going to staff our ED appropriately? How are we going to invest in certain areas that are going to impact overcrowding in the ED? So we're getting into very distinct tactics that are probably not ideal for me to discuss in this forum, but rest assured, these are things that have been addressed. And I would also say, pretty much every forum and in, both in the C-suite as well as with the Officers Council, this is at the top of, you know, at the top of the agenda. So, it's fair to say we're trying to do the best we can relative to the directive that the Board's been given.
Okay. Appreciate that. I've also, and some of my fellow trustees have been contacted by many, many doctors in this hospital. Mr. Spiegel has tremendous support in the hospital. Mr. Spiegel also has some people that aren't fans, okay? I think that's normal in this situation. What I've learned in the last seven and a half years, anyway, that's not unusual in hospital administration. But, this Board is together, and we're going to work this out, and I want everybody to just have faith in us, and, you know, let's do what's best for Erlanger. So, I just want to start with that. Okay. Don, you've got a presentation.
I'm so glad to see so many people show up to see our NICU update. But, back to your point, we try to always do what's best for patients, and we made some tough decisions last year regarding the neonatology unit. And what we committed to you to do is every six months, we'll come back and give you an update to tell you how things are going. So we're at our six-month time period, so I'm joined by Dr. Charles Wood, our new Chair of Pediatrics and our new CMO, and we're just going to walk through some of the timelines and where we are and give you a quick update. So as you may or may not remember, May of last year, we issued an RF5 on a national level to try to get a feel for what was out there in the field of neonatology. We had a subcommittee set up of doctors, nurses, administrators, folks from the community, pediatricians, and collectively, we made a decision that the right move was to enter in a partnership with Vanderbilt. Vanderbilt is a top-10 neonatology unit, as voted by US World News Report, and we wanted to bring that level of service here to our community. On December 4th, at midnight, we made that transition. It was a smooth transition on both sides of that transaction, so it worked out well. We identified our new leader, who you'll meet here in a minute, Nuh Sinha, who's joined us and with great leadership. I am very proud to announce that we've exceeded expectations in hiring. We have hired a full complement of physicians. We've got three more still to start, one starting in July, and then two more in August. We've also completed our hiring for the nurse practitioners. We originally said we were going to hire 16. We've had some changes in our census, so we've since cut back a little bit, but we're in a good spot, and we're going to continue to allow Dr. Sinha to modify that as needed.
So, I will just tell you, I've been, I guess, been here almost a year now, and walking through this process, I've been very pleased with how quickly we were able to hire, with a lot of support from Erlanger Recruiting and others, to get this group of people on board. So we now have, again, we'll have 10. We have one that PRN or available as needed. They come from a wide variety of institutions across the country with a variety of experience. We have a good number with significant clinical experience, some a few years, two right out of fellowship. That's the type of mix we were looking for for the long haul. So we believe this is an excellent group to continue moving forward in the NICU. Just to give you an update on what they are doing. So, they are working together, the doctors, nurses, and other staff together, to develop protocols, to align our protocols here with national standards of care. They're doing collaborative service huddles where different physicians get together with laboratory personnel, surgeons, the neonatologists, other subspecialists talking on a regular basis, also interacting with radiology, and even the critical care P.I.C.U. docs engaged as their shared care at times across those units. We're now able, with this staffing, to perform bronchoscopy's in the nursery itself, in the NICU, where these used to have to go to the OR, in terms of there's enough physicians that we can provide sedation. And we have surgery happening with specialists coming over from Vanderbilt, so that these babies can have eye surgery here now without having to be transported to Nashville and then back. And lastly, we are working now through full participation in what's called Vermont-Oxford Network. This is a national quality database, and we're putting in now all the data for all of our babies, so we can benchmark ourselves against national centers. Other things that are being worked on, the teams are working on feeding babies when they appear hungry rather than just every four hours, or every three hours, and things like that. Standardizing our protocols across a number of fronts, and really focusing on involving our parents in decision-making conferences with them, looking at lots of different types of conversations in terms of palliative care, working with the maternal fetal medicine physicians and other specialists before the babies are actually born, to plan care proactively once the babies are here. And, just things like that, where there's a lot of conversation taking place that leads to good communication and understanding and good outcomes. Thanks. So with that, I want to introduce to you the architect of a lot of this now, who's coming to us, Dr. Nuh Sinha. Stand up. Welcome. I'll just cut quickly. My first conversation with him is sometimes you realize, you meet someone, say, if this is the person for us, we hope he comes. And he did. So thank you, if you want to say just a couple of words.
I just want to say thanks. I know that there's been a lot of criticism and whatnot, but I just wanted to say that I've been incredibly well-supported by everyone here. The institution has been very responsive to the needs. I've turned over in 90 days probably a few hundred stones, and found quite a bit of things that need to be addressed, but as we've been able to increase the number of babies coming through and in and out very efficiently, safely, without any bounce backs, the institution's been completely on board with the changes that we needed to make, and we've seen the staff extremely receptive to wanting to be a part of the change process, and so I hope that it can serve some of our brothers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Sinha, thank you for joining us. I'd also like to thank our EMG leadership and Lindsay for all your work during this transition. This is a huge amount of recruiting that has taken place in a very short period of time. A lot of work went into this. So now, what are some of the results? What we've seen is a decrease in our average daily census. If you look at the line in the middle, that's actually the number of admissions and transfers we have combined. And what you see is about stable, but what you also see is a decrease in the average admissions, or average daily census. So the only thing that can cause that is reduced length of stay. So we spent a lot of time looking at our length of stay, and what we've realized is that with our new group, our length of stay has actually decreased relatively significantly. It means our length of stay has resulted in about 3.8 less babies per day. So if you think about the resources it takes for 3.8 babies a day, four babies a day, that's five nurses probably somewhere, depending upon your staffing model, and it's a lot of administrative support, it's a lot. So what it's doing is decreasing the anxiety in the unit, because you need less nurses with overtime, you need those things. So, it's really good to get these moms home, it's really good to get these babies home. We've got only six months of data, so babies are still there that have come since then. So I look forward to updating this slide in the future, along with our additional quality matrix. So it takes about six months to get that data into the system, the VON network, to get that spit out. So I will come back and present that, but we've got every reason to believe that's going to look really good. So where are we? What is it we're doing? What are our ongoing goals? So we've got collaborative culture of excellence. I think we've got a great environment, where nurses and doctors are working together. We've got, the most significant thing is increased provider-to-baby ratio. So we have more doctors working per day, which means we've got an extra care team, that's another set of providers there per day. We've got doctors there at night that are awake, we've got doctors on call at East when they need to be. So just having that physical presence of physicians has really been a big help. We've expanded our subspecialty interactions with some of the things that are happening. The ROP surgeries that are happening there literally are stopping 22 to 24 babies a year having to drive to Vanderbilt to have a surgery and drive back the next day. So if you can imagine the trauma on those little babies, that no longer is happening. So we're very appreciative of those. We've got continuous quality improvements, that includes nurses and doctors working together, as well as our quality improvement team. We've got families really involved with what we're doing. Because we have those extra physicians, we have their ability to spend time with those parents, which is critical. And then we're using national protocols that Vanderbilt's helping us with, that are really making sure that we're at the top of our game. So, I think the short thing I'll tell you is that I think we've exceeded expectations, my expectations anyways, in getting to where we are. I never thought we could recruit this many people this quick, so hands off to your team. So overall, I think we're very happy with where things are, and we appreciate your support in helping us get here. Thank you.
Don, can I ask you one question? What about the nursing staff? Is it stable or stable?
So there's two things that happened. One is we have less babies, so we have less nursing demand. So what's actually happened is our census in our P.I.C.U. has gone up, and the reason it's gone up is because we have more nurses to staff that unit now. Because before, they were really stretched and having to cross-cover two units, which makes a big difference. I know this is only on average of four babies, but that means some days it's six babies, some days it's eight babies. I think today, we have 49 kids in there, which is a good, safe number, feels great. So that part's gone real well. We also have a nurse program where we're bringing in nurses that are just finishing and letting them go through all the different units. So we've got a great staffing model now, where we're actually bringing in new nurses, having them try out the NICU to see if they like the NICU, try out the PICU, and that's actually resulted in better throughput and getting better nurses here, not better nurses, but more nurses here, and they're going to units that they want to be in. So, sometimes nurses say, I want to take care of little babies, and then they get up there and they realize it's kind of scary. Now we're giving them a test run, and they are deciding this is right for us, and it's working out well. So I think nursing morale has gone up a lot. We still have a long way to go. We could always use more nurses. I think that's a natural crisis, but I feel really good about it. The other thing I feel really good about is the collaborative relationship. Our physicians are really working hand-in-hand with them. Having more doctors there just means more time, there's more education. Dr. Newell, who's got, I think, 35 years' experience, he holds court and basically says, today, we're going to learn about this topic, and he'll gather folks together in one of the pods and spend a half an hour talking about a topic. Those are things the doctors, you know, we need them doing, so we're really happy about that.
That's correct.
It's a great question.
And so the turnover, that's all settled down?
It's slowed down. The unfortunate thing about nursing today, from my perspective, is you have a crop of new nurses that they come and they do a little bit of work, and they get enough work to feel really confident, and then they want to go do locum, so they can travel around the country and get paid. That will always happen, it's a new phenomenon, but overall, our retention rates are looking pretty good, and I feel a lot better about it. We've got a great partnership with HR to help us with those things, so I think we're in a really good spot.
Great.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Don, you took me on a tour of the NICU unit some time ago, and it seemed like there was like 78, 79, 80 babies in the NICU, and we're only licensed for about 65 or 66. Is that problem continuing?
Well, since December, we've not hit anywhere near those numbers. So, I will tell you, the way it works is when our census did get up that high, we had to look for other areas of the hospital to expand into, so we'd expand in remote pods in our P.I.C.U., as well as our Well Baby area. That has not been an issue since December. Babies are seasonal. When that issue did happen, we considered going on divert. The problem was, is there was nowhere to divert to. We're the only level four NICU. We called Vanderbilt, we called Atlanta, we said, can we send babies to you, can we send nurses to us? And their answer was, they were full too. So unfortunately, sometimes it's cyclical, we have to handle those problems. We've gotten through that, and I'm hoping we're not going to hit those kind of numbers anytime soon, but we're much better staffed to handle that now with increased number of doctors as well as more nurses. That's a great question. We also have our NICU over at East that we can offload to, which has been a great partner. Anything else? Great.
Thank you. Appreciate all you're doing. Okay. I think everybody's had a chance to see the minutes. If I could get a motion to approve the minutes for the May 23th Board meeting?
Do you have to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Go through the committee reports. Henry, I know you all, I know you've been there.
Yes, we've, Budget Finance did meet on Monday, and I believe Britt will be presenting a resolution for us to consider.
Okay, Phil? Planning? Phil with planning meet?
We didn't have a meeting.
Okay. Gerald?
We did meet.
Okay. Sheila?
We did not meet.
Linda?
We did not meet.
Okay. And the executive committee has? All right. I don't know of any unfinished business, so, Mr. Tabor? It's all yours. And I want to thank the trustees that either came down for a lunch and learn and/or attended Budget Finance and/or met with Britt privately to get educated on our budget.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please present the resolution for approval of the fiscal 1920 operating and capital budget. Just to give you a little idea of the path of how we got here, the budget is always highly dependent on the strategy. And so, we look and update our strategies annually. Our Chief Strategic Officer handles or leads that process, which started back in October, and make sure that we have the tactics involved to achieve the numbers associated. Not only is it, and when I say strategy, I'm talking, a lot of people automatically assume that means growth, but that means everything. Virtually quality, access, looking at the different things that we want to accomplish in the upcoming year. With the strategy then in place, we look at the volumes associated with that, and the departments then start building their budgets, and that takes about two months. And again, my hat's off to the departments and the physicians that are in this room that helped build that. It's a very complex, it's not an easy process when you're talking about hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of departments. And so, then all that's pulled together. We presented at the May, or at the April Budget and Finance Committee, the volumes and the initial capital budgets, and then at the May Budget and Finance, we also presented the dollars associated with those numbers. In addition, as the chairman noted, we had multiple lunch and learns, multiple one-on-ones. In addition, the Financial Review Committee, which is an outside committee, also reviews the budget to ensure the feasibility of the budget and makes a recommendation or an opinion to the Board. And you will have in your packet that the Financial Review Committee has reviewed this and has given a favorable opinion to the budget that you have in front of you. Some of the key themes that run through this budget this fiscal year, I think that from a volume standpoint, we have been more realistic. I think this fiscal year that we're currently in was fairly aggressive, and some of the growth metrics, and this year, we're projecting a 4.4% annual growth in admissions, which is equivalent to a total number, not incremental, but a total number of about 43,000 admissions. We also have in this budget a 5.1% growth in a lot of your outpatient areas. This would include the physician practices, some of the ancillary areas, et cetera. This also includes a full year of the Erlanger East Cancer Center that we opened up halfway through this year, as well as a full year of the new Kennedy Outpatient Children's Center that we opened up, that is an outpatient basis as well. In this budget includes $135 million, and you heard me right, $135 million of uncompensated care. We had budgeted in the 19 fiscal budget, 125, which we thought was a fairly big increase over the previous year, and unfortunately, we had under-budgeted that. We think that at the end of this fiscal year, we'll end up at 130 million of uncompensated care. So we have budgeted an increase in that. We have budgeted flat impact, other than about a $2 million decrease in Medicare payments from Medicare and Medicaid. As you know, Medicaid is, state Medicaid program is going through significant changes. We have people on all those committees helping direct those changes. Based on the information we have to date, we believe that the budget impact to Erlanger will be neutral, and we will keep you in thorn. But, if you remember, the state of Tennessee along, have been sort of negotiating with CMS at the federal level to do away with all the pools that Tennessee participates in, and so, and there's also discussion and approval really at the state level to go to a grant process, block grant for the Medicaid program. So everyone's trying to figure what that means and how that. So, based on the information we have today, what's in the budget is similar federal and state funding that we're receiving today, and if that materially changes, obviously, we would bring that back to the Board for further discussion and approval based on the changes. In this budget also closed a $3 million investment in our employees, and that is proposed to happen in January, based on the market needs that's out there. In this budget, there is emphasis on quality and throughput, and for examples, examples of those is in our capital budget. You'll notice that we have a fairly large, over 2.0, I think, $2.4 million project of adding 16 additional recovery rooms for GI and interventional radiology on the second floor. This will dramatically help throughput that is currently impacting our surgical areas, where those patients will be pulled out and recovered in that particular area. We're also replacing one of our older MRIs, and I'm sure everyone has heard about all the complaints of waiting on the MRI. This particular replacement will speed up dramatically testing of the procedures and allow significantly more volume to be done through that MRI appropriately. Again, that has been one of the larger complaints. We're also adding, at our East Campus, a GI, separate area for our GI procedures. Currently, those procedures are done in our surgical areas, which is again impacting patient flow. Those particular patients will be pulled out of the East surgery and done in this particular area, which will automatically improve the throughput there as well. From a nursing standpoint, one of our larger nursing complaints has been the nurse call system. And in fact, when we announced the final budget that we're presenting to this Board tonight, when we said that that was one of our top priorities in our management forum, the nurses applauded, which, and it's a system that currently, if you go to our nursing floors, they're carrying sort of like outdated cellphone technology, and that's how they're communicating, not only with each other, but with our patients. The technology has changed so dramatically now that they can have just a little badge that they wear that they can actually communicate with our patients and not have to go back and forth, back and forth to the nursing unit. And then if you look at how much time our nurses are spending doing those walks, getting the missed calls, et cetera, this will significantly improve their productivity and their ability to be at the bedside with our patient when needed. And then, another huge improvement is in primary care. We're spending over $4 million in capital, and that's, and then the additional money's on the operational side for increased access for our patients in primary care. The idea there, unfortunately, our EDs, and this is not just Erlanger, but across the nation, our EDs have become an access for primary care. So we're hoping that as we place these primary care facilities out into the communities of where people are either underserved or where they're traveling distance to go into our ED, this will be a good access point for our patients at the appropriate cost of treating those patients, and then have that easy access going forward. Those are just some examples of what we're planning to do. Within the budget also, the product use standards are being put in at the appropriate levels to meet the goals that have been mentioned earlier about quality, safety, and all those, and our clinical leaders have signed off on those as well. So overall, we believe this is a good budget. Just to highlight what's in the budget, if you're referencing the resolution at this point, Attachment 1 has our Consolidate Income Statement of 1.1 billion of net patient revenue with a $5 million bottom line, and that's in Attachment 1. Attachment, we are proposing up to a 4.99% rate increase in charges. You're going to, why'd you pick 4.99? That's an odd. A lot of our contracts, insurance contracts, has that limitation in that, so we'll be up to that point. And then you'll ask the second question, I'm hoping, what's the impact to our patient population? Very little, because this is only for those, we have still some commercial contracts that still pay a percent of charge, but not that mini, but we still don't want to lose that reimbursement that we're entitled for. But in most situations, this will have very little impact on our patients, because most of your, some of your commercial, or most of your commercial contracts are per D M or per D R G. Attachment 2 is the wage and benefits, and as are approved, this will include the $3 million additional investment. If you, we've also attached in Attachment 3, the non-salary requirements for the facility in the upcoming year. We've also included the South Side Dawson Avenue Income Statement. Their Board has reviewed that income statement and has approved it and recommend approval to this to this board. We've also included the Erlanger Bledsoe Hospital income statement, the Erlanger Western Carolina Hospital. That board met this afternoon and has approved that budget and is recommending it to the board. The continued care budget, that board has reviewed that budget and is making a recommendation for approval to the board. As long as in the HMO trust, we do still hold a license, even though it's inactive, for when we used to run an insurance company. We don't want to give up that license, but we still want to keep it active, but with no subscribers in that. In attachment four, we list the capital budget right at a little north of $36 million, and I've mentioned some of those key items, specifically the primary care access, the MRI and the recovery rooms. And then, there is an amount in there for the continued upticking or modernizing of the Epic system. Every year, that falls dramatically. So, our plan is after this fiscal year, the Epic capital commitment from this point on will be approximately $2 to $2.5 million every year as budgeted, or as expected. Under attachment five, you'll see the compliance budget. This is required by board resolution that we present the compliance budget separately. And then, the final item in this resolution is our annual pension contribution. As you all know, we have a defined benefit plan. This is not the matching plan, but it's the old pension fund that Erlanger has to deal with. And the, we have the actuary, a third-party independent actuary, look at this every year, determine what the recommended contribution to the plan is, and they're recommending an $8.5 million contribution of cash that we will do, and we do this over 12 months. So, we do one-twelfth of that every month, starting in this July. I know I've talked, there's a lot of stuff has come out, and I appreciate your attention to what we've been saying. Again, I want to thank the entire staff of the system. They made it very important to get this done. It's very complex, but it is important document that we used to, from a guidance standpoint, to move forward into the new fiscal year. With that said, I'll entertain any questions, and will ask humbly for your approval of this fiscal 1920 operating and capital budget.
Britt, how does that, how much is that pension, again, compared to last year?
We're right at, last year's contribution was right at 8 million, so it is about 500,000 more than prior year.
And where do you forecast that going?
It will probably increase, depending on the actuary, who retires, how the market does. It's like a, it's like this huge equation of how they come up, so it would vary, but it will probably.
And interest rates. Interest rates are low. If interest rates start going up.
Yeah, it reverses.
Then, then the contribution would be less. But interest rates right now are very low, so as they continue to be low, our contribution is going to be higher.
They're a little higher than they were, but they're.
A little bit.
Yeah.
If I guess that we would probably next year be bringing this resolution, it will probably be 9 million or more.
Yeah.
Just to be very conservative.
Yeah.
And this is for 12 more years, is that right?
Yes, remember, we picked up.
We adopted a 15-year, we've already paid three, so 12 years left.
And just so, give everyone an understanding of what we had, we had the, an actuary look at, because we are underfunded, we're currently in the underfunded situation. And so, the actuary looked at all the people that, and this is the old, old, the current pension plan, we're 100% funded, so I don't want anyone to think that, but this old, the old plan that, so they looked at everyone that was still in the old plan, their average age, their age, their date of service, when they expect them to retire, and trying to match the earnings, the payouts, the inputs to the expected retirement dates and all those. And so, that's how we come up with that third-party plan of the funding.
Britt, I want to thank you for that work. You and your staff have reviewed the budget. It's extremely complex and detailed, and y'all have done a marvelous job, a lot of man-hours have been put into it. And I want to congratulate you and your staff for the hard work you did on this budget.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, administration recommends this budget for approval.
Thank you. Field, do you want to make that a motion?
So, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Britt.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Board. Okay, Dr. Bolton, do you have a report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a brief statement. In follow-up to Sunday's article, the Medical Executive Committee convened a meeting today and voted to issue the following statement of clarification for the Board of Trustees. The Erlanger Board of Trustees has delegated to the medical staff the responsibility for quality of patient care, consistent with the bylaws of the Medical Executive Committee, is specifically charged with evaluating areas of risk and the clinical aspects of patient care and safety, and proposing plans and recommendations for reducing these risks. This was the basis for the MEC letter dated May 9th, 2018. It is beyond the delegated responsibility of MEC to represent all the views of the general medical staff with regards to hospital management. The reference to quote-unquote "no confidence" in the letter referred to the current structure of the executive leadership in addressing these particular patient issues identified in the letter.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks.
Anything else? All right. Thank you. Dean Chat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A lot's been going on this past year at the College of Medicine. As many of you know, we have hired seven new department chairs. The first, right after the beginning of the year, was Dr. Woods, who has spoken with us earlier. And the last, most recent one, was the new department chairman of Orthopedics, who's coming to us from the Mayo Clinic in Rochester, and he's scheduled to start on October 1st. So, we've wrapped up the chair searches and all of that's done. We're just finalizing some of their contract issues, but that should be done quickly. We have, coming this summer, in fact, next week, and they're already here, 59 new interns, first-year residents or first-year fellows entering our graduate and medical education programs here at Chattanooga and at Erlanger. There are expansion plans in orthopedics, as well as family medicine, and we're looking at urology as well as a possible expansion area in the next year. It won't happen this summer, but next summer. We had a promise back a few months ago that the state of Tennessee was going to start funding graduate and medical education positions. As you all know, currently, most graduate and medical education positions are funded through federal dollars, through Medicare, Medicare, Medicaid. But several states, including Georgia just south of us, and others, have created state dollars to help fund additional GME spots for resident training, focusing primarily on primary care, general pediatrics, family medicine, and in some degree, internal medicine. The initial proposal was there would be 100 new spots funded statewide, across all the medical centers, academic medical centers in the state. We figured, based on the geography and the math, that we would get about five to six new positions here on the Chattanooga campus. What happened was, we were promised the money was in the bank, it had been allocated, and there you go. What happened was, is the money was in the bank, but it wasn't in UT's bank, or it wasn't in the state bank, it was in, it was in the Tin Care budget, it was in their bank. And the Tin Care Commissioner got in, negotiated with the Tennessee Hospital Association to rearrange the funds flow, to do other things with the money than train new physicians, new primary care physicians. So, that number of slots in the new proposal would drop down to 20 or 25 statewide, which means we would get one or two here, rather than five or six. Now, we're working hard, lobbying hard to get that decision reversed, but it may not be doable. But in any event, you know, we'll survive that, you know, at least we're getting something from the state to support graduate and medical education. In the past, we've gotten nothing from the state. So, it is set in the right direction, in my opinion. But in any event, we do have a nice group of young tradies coming in. There will be an orientation in the morning at 8 o'clock, just an introductory thing. They've been here all week, going through orientation, going through boot camp, and doing their ACLS and all those kind of things. But that will be at 8 o'clock in the Pierce Conference Room over the new Kennedy Outpatient Center. So, all of y'all are certainly welcome to attend if you want to come by. You're welcome to do that if you wish. So, I think that ends my report, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Sean. Okay, Mr. Spiel, the President's report.
Mr. Chairman, how are you?
Good.
Wonderful presentation. You gave a brief update on all the progress that has been accomplished here at Erlanger. So, high-level Erlanger is the 10 largest public hospital system in the United States. It's the largest, EMG Erlanger Medical Group is the largest multi-specialty physician practice in the region. We are now seven hospitals, six acute, and one behavioral health hospital. The emergency department is the largest, seventh-largest emergency department in the United States, with the fourth-largest interventional stroke program in the United States. Currently, we have six Air Force helicopters, three in east Tennessee, two in northwest Georgia, and one in North Carolina, and we are still exploring, deploying an additional one in Alabama. We are the only Level 1 pediatric and adult trauma center, the only children's hospital within 100 miles, and the only comprehensive pediatric center that has an ER PICU and Level 4 NICU. This is an important slide, because it really talks about our uncompensated care. We presented this slide to Congress regarding the 340B hearings. And one of the questions they said is, why is your, whoop. No, how does this work? There we go. Is this the, can't see the, but the line, the increase in the 340B, they were questioning it. But when they took that increase in 340B savings in context to our dramatic growth in uncompensated care, the result from these hearings was Erlanger is a model 340B hospital, because it's indigent care, the patients who are indigent are benefiting by the 340B savings. So, if we really look at what we're doing with quality, safety, and service, we are now a leapfrog B hospital, and our competition is not. If you look at H caps, for the first time, we have accomplished three stars. This is an unbelievable progress to the quality department, Dr. Jackson and his team, to really have really made efforts to get us to be a three-star. Now, this is just the H caps, but the H caps does fit into hospital compare. The lag, I do expect that that will then move from a two-star, hopefully, to a three-star as well. But this is tremendous. If you look at our balance scorecard, we have made tremendous progress in all areas. One area that I think we can, which also adds to some of the crunch in the ED, is our length of stay, and that's still red. So, that's some of the focus that the quality team is really working for, and we're going to give them additional resources so they could really address that. But to be stretched in two of the areas, immortality, readmission, which is world-class, and the patient experience improvements, the whole team has done an amazing job. If you look at H caps overall, over the last several years, there has been dramatic improvement in H caps in this hospital. And if you look at mortality quality, it is now top quartile performance. So, this is another thing, and that's for AMI, congestive heart failure, pneumonia, and COPD, and ischemic stroke. So, the, for the acuity of patients that we're receiving, this is really terrific improvement in quality. On readmissions, we talked about it, again, a wonderful improvement over the last couple of years. And the EMG practice, H caps, of how the patient experience, the patient experience is significantly, significantly better. If you look at the emergency department, what is the experience of patients in the emergency department? We know it's really crowded, we know there are holds, there are also psych problems, but the patients, after everything, they are improving their experience, and that is a positive thing, so we're doing something really right. Overall services, outpatient ranking, press gaining, H caps, again, it's going up significantly. Ambulatory surgery is pretty much flat, but still improving. Strategic growth, so all of the departments, both on the outpatient, on the inpatient, and especially things like bariatric surgery, cardiac surgery, cath lab, these things are increasing exponentially. If you look at just the encounters, high, high level, of not only the employed doctors, but just through the hospital, we were in fiscal year 14, seeing approximately 400,000 patients. Today, we're seeing close to a million patients a year. So, the access of care that we're providing to this community has dramatically improved, and that is helping the community. If you look at our net patient revenue, we looked at about 520 million, we're now at 1.1 billion. So, if you look at the medical EMG Erlanger Medical Group doctors, we went from 120 doctors, and now we're at 442 and growing. And those of the representatives in the back of the room, most of them are EMG doctors. Now, what is the need in this community? Dr. Jackson and his team, as well as planning and compliance, on a regular basis, look at what is the need of physicians in our community. One slide that really bounced off the page at me is what is the need of primary care doctors in our area? And they really drilled down and looked at the current activity, they looked at age of physicians, they looked at the proximity, waiting lists of getting into the doctors, and we're looking at not only a current primary care need of 30 doctors, but overall, in the area, in the region, about 100, a need for about 100 more. So, anybody interested in primary care, the need is here, and it's, and it's needed here in Chattanooga, and we have a plan to address this. So, we have a lot of patients coming into our emergency department. Some of the problems are the inability to get psychiatric placements done. They take up sections of the ED, sometimes six to 10 patients holding, waiting for access. We thought that our behavioral health hospital would help, on some level, it did, but the need in this community is growing. Overdoses are growing. We had to spend a lot of money this past year redoing the morgue, because we just overgrew the morgue of patients dying from substance abuse. And this is an issue not only in Chattanooga, but growing through the ED. The other is community hospitals closing. Tennessee is the number-two hospital in the United States, the number-two state in the United States of rural hospital closures. And when that happens, like here in Copper Basin, and other hospitals surrounding us, when they do, those patients then have to come here, and it overwhelms the system at times. So, what are we doing about it? So, if you look at the red circles, those are the areas that are designated where we're putting in urgent care centers. And right now, we, last week, we opened up three urgent care centers in east, downtown, and Saudi Daisy. But we plan on opening them up in Ringgold, Murphy, Cleveland, North Chattanooga, Dunlap, Saudi Daisy, and Dalton. Oh, those are the primary care. And urgent care in North Chattanooga, Collagdale, Saudi Daisy, Cleveland, Ringgold, Signal Mountain, East Chattanooga, downtown, and Murphy. So, we're investing in providing care where the patients live, and hopefully, they will then, the patients that are appropriate to go to an emergency room will go there, and the patients that can be handled in the communities. Remember, we're going to continue to explore it, but right now, we receive 20,000 patients from Bradley County that come to Hamilton County for care. There has to be a solution to deal with that county's problems, and we are going to And we are going to continue to explore it, but that 20,000 does affect the operation of the ED. Yes, Dr. Jackson, his team, the committee, Medical Executive Committee, we're all working to help with the flow and work through faster and better, but there are some structural problems that need to be addressed. So if you look at our areas, Erlanger is growing our market share by approximately 8.2%. I'm going to pass on the other two slides and go to the University of Tennessee. In 2014, Erlanger has funded approximately 170 residents. Since then, right now, 185. We added five new programs and 15 new residents, at the cost to Erlanger of approximately $2.15 million annually increase. So we're committed to the residency program. We believe one of the answers, not all of the answers, but one of the answers is educate physicians locally, so they will stay here and practice in the community. Dr. Jack, thank you for your comments about the expansion of primary care. That is one of the most needed areas, and we have to figure out how we work together to expand our primary care residency, both in family medicine and in pediatrics. So the strategic plan guidelines for the future, improve quality, safety, and service, advance operational excellence, which we are together committed to do with the Medical Executive Committee and the Board, improve access, which I've talked about, and drive service line growth, enhance physician and associate engagement, and improve financial performance. Market trends continuing to shift to value-based payment models. There's a whole lot of discussion, both on, from Blue Cross and Blue Shield and Cigna, to look at risk models. Although they haven't really hit Tennessee, you know they're coming. Walmart is now only subscribing to certain providers for hips and knees, and now in radiology. Increase risk-value payment models, demand that the health system become more efficient, and every hospital's going to have to start doing tweaking of staff, so they can become more efficient in the future. Focus on identifying and eliminating waste. A lot of work with hips and knees, I saw Dr. Freeman in the back, working with limiting the amount of implants, and figuring out what are the most cost-effective implants with the best outcomes. And I know the operating room and the staff and all that work from the physicians has been unbelievable, and we need to continue to focus on improving quality and the patient experience. Moody's from Wall Street, they evaluated 43 academic medical centers. Two had positive outcomes, nine had negative outcomes, and 32 are rated as stable. Erlanger, so everybody knows, triple B, stable, and BAA2, stable, which equals each other, so Erlanger is a very stable organization and fits in extremely well. So as we went over the budget for fiscal year 20 and beyond, Erlanger is phased for the next part of its growth strategy. We need to assure sustainability, so the efforts that we have put in place are sustainable. We need to continue to focus on expense management and savings initiatives, and we need to build our cash. We need to align service and volume growth with expense growth. And we need to balance our growth projections. I believe the budget that we presented and was approved today is very conservative and achievable. And focus on improving quality and patient experience. And we need to focus on continuing, which we have been doing, is investing in the infrastructure, because in the past, we had not invested properly in our infrastructure. Future plans for the children's Phase II and the adult tower, which is now, so things evolve, and we're probably going to have to look at putting a new Center of Emergency Medicine in the new tower, which I'll talk about in a couple of minutes. And we also need to continue to support the region with the opportunities that it has. So the budget has inpatient growth of 4.4%, outpatient is 5.1%, and the ER visits 1.5%. Again, I believe extremely achievable and sustainable. So I want to talk a little bit about the children's hospital and the adult tower of excellence. So this is what it looks like, this is not a new picture for you, but what it does is it shows the upper six floors are going to be children's, 120 private rooms. And this will have, on one side of the building, a separate entrance only for children. On the lower four floors, it's going to be ICUs, anywhere from 96 to 120, we still have to figure that out, but that will be the, a real opportunity, so we can actually place patients in the appropriate critical care beds in a timely way, which is, right now, it's occluded, because we don't have enough beds. It's essential to improve the patient experience, because most of that, the ED is 60 years old, the design is 60 years old, and some of our patient rooms are aging. And we really need to start looking at providing state-of-the-art, modern facilities, critical care beds for our patients. This project is targeted at about $200 million. Brett and myself are going to be talking to both JP Morgan and Ponder, who's our financial advisors of timing, and how can we do this, and also that we're going to have to also figure out philanthropy. Now, when we began the project of the first phase of the children's hospital, everybody said it could not be done, that this hospital has never raised any money for philanthropy for Erlanger, because we're a public hospital and theoretically supported by tax dollars, which is really not true. But we were able to do that, we'd had a, created a vision, we talked to the people in the community, everybody did it, and we made a reality. We broke ground, we built the facility, it came out under budget and quicker than we thought, and we raised the money that we set our goal to do, and we succeeded. And we absolutely want to continue that quest and make this a reality for this community. So the 14th floor is going to be shelved, 13th floor is a phantom floor, but there'll be two separate lobbies on two sides of the buildings, one for the women's ED and the adult lobby, as well as the children's. So this is the vision of the future, this will take us to the next phase, it's an exciting time for us. There's unbelievable rooms, unbelievable visions, and, Mr. Chairman, that is my report. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, please, does anyone else have anything else? Any trustees have any comments? The upcoming meetings are listed for July, we will be meeting, the board will meet on, I think there was some speculation that we were not going to meet on the July 25th, that we are, so we'll, we'll see everybody back here then. I have credentials to follow. Thank you for being here.